Welcome all to the September 17th Planning Board Meeting. As always, we're going to start with minutes from last month. We had, actually this was from our special meeting on the 22nd of August. We approved the car pay application and discussed the Weinstein Hensley application. I don't see anything wrong with this. Does anyone have any comments?
It's good.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from August 22nd. Do I have a second?
Oh, second that.
All in favor? We've got four or five invoices in front of us. The first one is for the Times Review Media Group for the public notice for the Dawson, Diamond Wetlands application. Total is $63.30. We need this. So I'll make a motion to accept the Times Review Media Group's invoice for $63.30. On second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Second one is from Academy Printing Services. This was for the Planning Board posters. We had to make new posters for our wetlands applications for when there's an application in front of us, the homeowner must notify, put a posting on their property, and these are the signs for it. Is for $489.23. This is something that we need. So I make a motion to accept the Academy Printing Services invoice for $489.23. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Third one is for EHA for Legal Services, Professional Services for the month of August. I had to deal with the car pay application, attending Plan Board Meeting, and correspondence regarding a foil. Attending the special meeting, preparing the timed application notice, reviewing other applications, wetlands applications, total 15.2 hours for $5,700, but with a municipal discount, came in at $5,194.68. So I make a motion to accept the EHA invoice for the month of August totaling $5,194.68. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We actually have two invoices for the Rayner Group for the month of August. First invoice deals with Sixth Daniel Lord Road, the lot line adjustment, preliminary review, and attending a planning board meeting. That totaled $660. The second one was for reviewing the 169 Ram Island Drive Wetlands application, and that totaled, that was 6.5 hours and totaled $1,072.50. Two of them combined are $1,732.50. So I make a motion to accept the Rayner Group's August invoices totaling $1,732.50. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have Beth drafted a resolution for us for the Weinstein Hensley property at 28 South Midway Road. We held the public hearing a month ago and discussed it at our special meeting last month. Two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
Twenty second.
Twenty second, thank you. And it seemed very straightforward, that really weren't any issues. We reviewed the criteria for the permit issuance. We felt the application met the criteria set forth in 129.5. We did not feel that it will pause, the project will negatively impact, do not, we find that the proposed project will not negatively impact value function or size of the wetlands because the proposed project will not be expanding the foot. And it offers mitigating items that will improve the environmental conditions of the The applicant is putting in, taking out an outdated sanitary system, assess pull 55 feet from the wetlands and putting in a conforming IA sanitary system. They're adding dry wells for stormwater collection, and there's a minor expansion of small deck on the water side, but that falls within the one-time exemption of the current code. Conditions put on it will be the installation of wireback fencing, dry wells that we just discussed. They're removing asphalt driveway and putting in a water pervious clean gravel driveway. They have provided a landscape plan which has a vegetative buffer that we had asked for. During construction, vehicles will be off the street, and upon completion, the town's environmental consultant will review the project to confirm that the plantings described on the plan by Verdenber Landscaping dated 18th of August will be, have been met. So anyone have any questions about this resolution?
All good progress.
So I make a motion to accept Resolution 24 of 2023 for the Weinstein and Hensley project of 28 South Midway Road. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask you to read the?
Absolutely.
Actress, please.
A public hearing regarding an application for a wetlands permit by Dawson J. and Diamond R., the property which is subject to the, of the application is located at 57 South Ferry Road Shelter Island, New York. The applicants are requesting a wetlands permit to remove/relocate a code compliant location, an existing unpermitted and noncompliant habitable accessory structure with an attached deck and stairs out of the adjacent vegetative buffer, and to allow for a proposed addition in existing residence partially with the adjacent vegetative buffer extending the nonconformity to within 84.4 feet from the wetlands. Said addition would add an additional 213 square feet in the adjacent vegetative buffer, secret class type 2.
Great. I don't think we had any correspondence on this press. No. We do have a report for the Conservation Advisory Council. They held a meeting on August 14th, and they had three points. They want to relocate the studio stair clear of adjacent regulated area, the minimum disturbance of 15 by 15 to the adjacent regulated area, and a vegetation plan for disturbing areas in parentheses, relocated studio perimeter of new addition. Matt Sherman is here representing the applicant.
Yeah, thank you, Matt Sherman with Sherman Engineering Consulting. I'm here with James Dawson and Roz Diamond, the property owners. If I could share my screen. This is a fairly straightforward, fairly straightforward application. This property, let me pull up the screen here. This property is probably fairly well-known to most people. It's across the street from the, from the medical center, heading towards South Ferry. They're on South Ferry Road. The property itself, it's kind of bordered on three sides basically by Mashamak. To the south is another private property, but it's an undeveloped private property. It is part of the nature conservancy, has a separate stand on the block, and all the rest of it is also. This is a copy of the survey from Michael Hemmer. It shows Ferry Road, in this case Ferry Road is on the far left-hand side, and then Mashamak is surrounding, as I said, on the other three sides. The reason why we're here tonight is because a majority of the property has got this freshwater wetlands in it. So basically, anything you're going to do on this site, you're going to be primarily within the, within the regulated area of that wetlands. There's just a little bit of a zoomed up area of the, that easterly, that, excuse me, that westerly portion of the property showing the single-family dwelling that's here now with a deck. This is the existing septic system. This is that studio Catherine had mentioned in the notice, and the stairs, and then the driveway looping around on the southwest side of the house. Our wetland setbacks, we've got 75 feet from the freshwater wetlands and 100 feet from the freshwater wetlands. You can see the house is entirely, and deck are entirely outside of that vegetative buffer, that first 75 feet. The existing septic system is partially within that area, and then a portion of the studio and the studio stairs are within the, within that regulated area, the adjacent regulated area of that 75-foot to 100-foot setback. We're in double A-zone, so our zoning setbacks, 50 feet from the front yard, 30 feet from the side yard for the principal building, and 15 feet from the side yard for any accessory buildings. So the existing dwelling is completely compliant with all of those setbacks. Here's our, our dimensions called out, the existing house, 83.9, so basically 84 feet from the wetlands, existing deck, 79 and a half feet from the wetlands, the existing leaching pool on the septic system is 61 feet from the wetlands. For the studio, the stairs are just over 80 feet, and the studio itself is just a hair over 97 feet, so basically 97 feet from that freshwater wetlands boundary. Okay, all right, and here's what we're proposing. The, on the south side of the building, my cursor's going a little bit slow here, we've got a 15 by 15 addition. It's 84.4 feet from the wetlands boundary, whereas the existing house is 83.9, so basically the same distance from that freshwater wetlands, just about a half a foot further away. But again, it's within the adjacent regulated area, it's not within the vegetative buffer, so it's within that 75 to 100-foot setback. The existing studio, here on the north side of the property, right now, what, what we're proposing is to relocate that outside of the regulated area, and we're going to get back to that in just a second based on the CAC's comments, but right now, with the, with the, the plan that was originally submitted to the town had us relocating that studio, so it's outside of the side yard setback and outside of the 100-foot wetland setback. We've got two stormwater dry wells located on the water side of the house, where they're over 100, 100 feet from the wetlands, eight-foot diameter by eight-foot deep dry wells. I'll get into the details on that in just a second. And then really, the best part about this project is we're taking this existing septic system, which is within the vegetative buffer, getting rid of it, and we're replacing it with a new IA system that's about 115, 120 feet from the, from the wetlands boundary, so well outside of the regulated area. That, to me, is really what makes this project worthwhile, is that we're getting that existing septic out of there and putting in the new IA system. This is just a cleaned up version of the same, kind of give you a better idea of how everything lays out in relationship to that wetlands boundary. The test hole on site was put in right in the area of the proposed septic system, and it showed groundwater at an elevation in the test hole itself of 2.4 feet. The soils in this area are not very good. It's a clay-type gravel soil that's, that's known to be in this general area. We may end up modifying the septic design a little bit in order to accommodate that, that heavy clay. That's something that was a recommendation or a comment on the CAC as well, but in any case, if we do modify the sanitary layout, that leaching field, it'll be staying the same proposed distance from the wetlands or possibly a little bit further if we go with a shallow drain field or something to that effect. One of the questions that had come up during one of the discussions, I think it was a preliminary discussion with the planning board, was whether the addition was going to require dewatering because of the elevation of groundwater. So this is a cross-section showing the addition. Finished floor elevation at 16.6. The foundation, or the basement level, is an elevation of 8.3. Groundwater is at 2.5. So with the way that the geometry of this all works out, we've got just over four feet, four and a half feet from a 2.5-foot groundwater elevation to the bottom of the footings. So we're not going to have an issue with dewatering at all when it comes to building this building, or this addition, excuse me. Same thing goes for the stormwater. We designed for a four-inch rainfall. Town requires it. We designed for a two-inch rainfall, so we're actually providing twice the stormwater capacity that's required. Stormwater dry well is the lower one, is at an elevation of 14 feet. The, the one to the north is at a little bit of a higher elevation, so I just showed the lower one because that's worst-case scenario. With an 8-foot dry well, that puts the bottom of the dry well at 4.5 feet, two feet above our, our groundwater elevation as shown in the test hole. The floor plans, one of the things that had come up with the, with the CAC is they had asked about, you know, this is the addition here. They'd asked, why does it, why do you want it on the end of the building? How about putting it on the west side of the building so that you're not encroaching into the, into the wetlands regulated area? By putting it on the north side, excuse me, the west side of the building, what you're doing is encroaching into the front yard. You're still outside of the front yard setback, but you're encroaching into the area where the driveway is. You're putting it up on this side of the building, which makes for an awkward layout. So the, the architect designed it so that it's within the adjacent regulated area. It flows with the flow and the look of the house. The ridge line can be continued naturally over from where it currently exists over top of the new addition. They can incorporate the, the existing chimney and the, the way that the building is laid out just as a better design and a better usage when doing it and when laying it out with this design. The existing first floor, the upper floor, has got a few bedrooms, it's got an entrance area, a foyer, if you will, and a office. There's an area here which is open to the area below, and then on the, the ground level, you've got a living room, a kitchen, and then some storage areas. So bedrooms are on the first floor, kitchen and living room areas are on the ground floor. The area behind the fireplace and part of the new addition on the ground level will be proposed storage. This is just kind of give you a feel for the site and how it is, where this addition is going to be. Here we've got some vegetation that's currently at the side of the house where the addition will be. There's rose of Sharon and lilac that will be trimmed back, taken out, and replanted on the outskirts of the addition once that's constructed. This is the chimney I was talking about that we're going to be going on the opposite side of for the addition. This is an area looking at from the south side of the house. Ponds are on your left-hand side, or wetlands are on your left-hand side. The road is on your right-hand side. The studio we were talking about is over here in this area. One of the things that the CAC had mentioned was that the, in moving this studio, that we've got these couple of trees that are right smack dab in the way, and they would have to come out. So when we put this application into the town, the building department had said that we can't, we can't keep the studio where it is. We would have to go to the ZBA for variance in order to keep it there. We had decided at that time to propose moving the studio so that we didn't have to obtain a ZBA variance. The problem with moving the studio, it's good that we're getting away from a nonconforming portion of the project, of the property, that's the positive. The negative is there's going to be a lot of damage to mature trees, mature vegetation in doing so. So what we would like the planning board to do is to follow the CAC's lead, if the planning board feels this project as a whole is approvable, to approve the moving of the shed, but do so with the recommendation that the applicant go to the zoning board to see if they can get an approval to keep the shed where it is. So if the zoning board doesn't approve it, the wetlands permit covers it. If the zoning board does approve it, then we don't have to do it, and the wetlands permit doesn't matter as far as the shed is concerned. We would still have to remove stairs, so the wetlands permit would cover the removal of the stairs since that's within the 100-foot setback. But it would, it would enable us to have at least the opportunity to go to the zoning board for relief on keeping that shed where it is. This is another view looking with the pond a little bit closer on your right-hand side. The studio directly in front. Coming from the other side, looking back up toward 114, if you could, you're in the backyard of the property with the, the wetlands to your rear, looking out towards 114, and then looking down toward the south toward 114. And then looking from the back of the house, looking out towards the wetlands. One of the things that, that I did not provide with this project was a ornate or overly-developed wetland vegetation plan, like we've had for some of the other projects. And one of the reasons for that is, I'm kind of the mindset on this of, if it's not broke, don't fix it. You've got very good, very healthy, very substantial vegetation ringing in the pond for that, that wetlands area. Anything we add to it is not really adding anything at all. We're just, you know, we're just putting suspenders on the belt. So to that end, we're not proposing anything other than maintaining the status quo, with the exception of moving those, that vegetation that's next to the, the new addition, moving that out so that it accommodates the new addition and then putting it back in and they, and an extended area out. That's all I have for the board. If you have any questions for me, I can go back over anything, I can answer any direct question. If there's anything they'd like to say, I can sit down and get out of your room.
The problem with doing the either/or is currently the studio is within 100-foot.
Yes, 97.1 feet from the wetlands boundary, yeah.
Which was not noticed as part of this application. It was, because it's proposed to be moved, so the board couldn't grant either/or for it to remain within jurisdiction at all. So whether it's moved three feet or, you know, it's, it would still have to be moved out of the jurisdiction.
Beth, there's, there's a long history of the, of the way the town has handled, and I'm not saying that, I was going to discuss this later on in our meeting, but it's a good point to bring it up. Where the town board has historically reviewed, pushed an applicant to the ZBA first to get a determination, only with that ZBA determination in hand, then allowing the applicant to file for the wetlands application. So this is, in essence, would be flipping that long process. I think, I don't know, maybe, Amber, you'd have some better history on this, but I think it goes back to where the, the applications, ZBA and the wetlands were run in parallel, up to an application that was held on Point Lane. I think that was the trigger for one, where then the supervisor insisted that the ZBA start reviewing their end first.
As long as I've been on the board, it's been given first then wetlands.
Correct. So that was something I was going to talk with all of you about later on, because the ZBA could say yes, but then ask for changes.
Which might change the wetlands.
Which might, will then change the application again. So maybe what we could do is leave this open until you're ready to come back, allow you to get the chance to go to the ZBA, and then you'll determine whether or not we have to renotice with a new application because of the or, or just stick to the current.
Yeah, that's what I would say, is let's stick to the current idea of moving the studio if you're okay with that and you approve the permit. We can always, at the same time, once you've approved the permit, go to the ZBA. If we get relief, then come back to you to modify the permit that's already been approved. That way at least they can get going on the septic work and the addition and everything else, and if the studio ends up being something that we can work with, that's great. I would like it, if you could, work into your resolution, if, if the board's comfortable doing this, if you would like them to keep the studio where it is, to comment that on the, on the resolution. I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but it's, you know, it's, the reason why the studio is an issue is in the early 2000s, they got a permit to build it, and as a lot of the permits in the early 2000s, it was written on the back of an envelope, on the back of a napkin, so there's not a lot of information on the, in the file about it. It's basically a, a one-page application form saying, build 15 by 15 shed, and that was it. The property owners built it, not realizing that they were as close to the property line as they were. It's been a, it's been an issue for a long time, that, that, once the town realized that it was there and the owners realized it was there, it's been an issue. So now we're, you know, either legalizing it by relocating it or legalizing it by getting a variance to keep it. So, you know, either way, we're going to have to legalize it, we realize that.
What is it being used as? Is it just storage or is it?
It's, it's an art studio.
Is it conditioned?
It's got a window unit, I believe, right?
Yeah, it has, it doesn't have a bathroom or water.
No water.
No water, no sewer, it's got electricity, yeah.
And the town doesn't deem it habitable space, because then it would have to comply with the 30-foot setback, not the 15.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe it is because of the fact that it's got, it's got no water, no, no septic.
And no, and no heat.
And no permanent heat, yeah, it's not like.
And no heat's being added.
Right, there's no, it's not like there's a, you know, central AC or central heat or anything like that, yeah.
Matt, can I ask a question about the drawing? Because it's just a little difficult for me to see.
Yes, absolutely.
It looks as though, and I do remember from having been on the property with Marcus, that, is there something that can be done with the staircase that's leading up to this little studio? Because it's so close to me, it looks like, almost like just a little corner of that studio would actually make it fall on the right side.
Yeah, there's.
On the good side, so.
And that was one of the CAC's comments, was leave the studio where it is, but get the stairs out of the regulated area. And that's certainly an attainable goal.
We'd have to go to the ZBA for that.
But we'd have to go to the ZBA in order to keep the studio in the location that it is.
And that's assuming the ZBA can grant that relief.
Yeah, and we, that's right, that's exactly right, yeah. So the, I mean, as you were saying, if we go with the, the plan as proposed, relocate the studio and then go to the ZBA, have a complete separate application for keeping it, if that, if we prevail in that, then we come back to you.
It doesn't affect me or this application, but I'm surprised you don't move it to comply with the 30-foot setback, which means it could be conditioned space in the future and gets rid of this ambiguity that it's right now.
And once we move it, we move it. Once it's outside of the 100-foot setback, we could move it all the way up to the 50-foot if we wanted to and move it to the 30.
It just seems we're.
It's out of the jurisdiction.
Yes, strange. The, regarding the buffer, it was interesting to see that the DEC had specific planting requirements if you weren't to move the shed, which includes a number of trees and shrubs and/or shrubs. So you're really pushing for no, no kind of buffer there at all.
But not within the. But not within the regulated area, no. Because in any of the plantings that would go in, um, if we move the shed, they'd go into the area where the shed is located, which is outside of the hundred-foot setback. But I, I can put a plan together if the board wants something, um, but, but again, I was, I was looking more at the idea of where the wetlands are and trying to keep it in an area, you know, keep it in, in the condition that it is now.
Oh, so the, the DEC penned the, the required plantings against the sanitary system. And four was, in lieu of the sanitary upgrade or restoration planting area consisting of three native trees sized one inch in trunk diameter, planted fifteen feet on center, twelve shrubs sized for five gallon containers planted six feet on center, planted along the upland side of the freshwater wetlands boundary, shown on the approved plans will be required. Um, can you go back to the site plan once again? I'm sorry to keep-
That's right.
And Julian, Marcus, was, is the grade fairly steep or is it fairly flat down to the freshwater? It's, it looks, you know, it seems slope.
It varies.
The contours help.
Yep.
Yeah, so that area seems, seems relatively flat.
It's deeper when you first come down the driveway.
Yeah, so that, it seems flat by around the water, so, okay.
Yeah.
I'm less concerned about water flowing, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you can, um, that's a pretty good one there. Looking, the, the septic would be just to your left-hand side of that picture?
Yeah, it's, it's-
It's flat.
We're not talking about significant needs there, and there seems to be quite a bit of vegetation. Is that what you're saying, the, the vegetation there?
Yeah.
Well, the improved IA system is very good. I think you just have to resolve the, you know, what you're doing with the ZBA.
I would say for all intents and purposes now, let's keep the, let's-
Keep it as if you're moving.
We're currently proposing, yeah.
So you want to move it?
Don't want to move it, but as far as the wetlands permit is concerned, yes.
It seems like we need to write it up as, as doing what they're doing.
Yes.
The ZBA, if I can do a new wetlands and revise it, right? Right?
Yeah, because we have to, have to renotice to stay where it is.
Okay, um, any, any more questions from the board?
Um, I think moving it would, would, you know, also cause a lot of detriment to the environment, to take those trees out and so forth, so I think it could be-
They are two very robust trees coming, and they actually both-
But we can't do that, the ZBA has to do that.
So what's in front of us now is moving it, and that's what we're judging, and we're supposed to, we're going to judge this application as that.
And I think it's fine moving, you know, and I mean, if we, if this is the way they have to go, the ZBA says no.
Yeah.
Because this is all good progress.
And when they go back to the ZBA, they're going to have more problems with trying to figure out those stairs. The stairs have to be removed. Um, we're going to, you're going to have to come back to us for wetlands, you're going to have to re, re-submit an application because the corner of that-
If it stays.
If it stays.
Yeah, yeah.
You're going to have to come back again.
If it stays, we'll have to come back to you as well.
You're going to figure out how to get the stairs to work to get in there, so.
Yeah, yeah, because there's some, there's substantial square footage there within that regulated area, absolutely.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Anyone in Zoom land? Pam?
Yes, good evening. I, I guess, I have less of an issue with the shed that's on the side of the property and more of an issue of the expansion into the regulated area of a building that has septic on it, of the total, what is it, two-hundred-and-ten square feet? Putting that fifteen by fifteen addition to the house? I mean, does anyone have a comment on that? I, I mean, I just really question why that's okay. That's really more that, what you're permitting than the moving of this art studio, as far as I'm concerned.
Because I can do that.
I mean, and that's more than a hundred-foot exemption of new construction, right?
That's only, this applies to the-
That only applies to the vegetative buffer, not the adjacent area.
Chasing area can be unlimited.
No, the town code has a, has an ordinance in it that says you can't have anything but septic within a hundred feet of the wetlands. You can't have, you can't have a building-
The septic system cannot be within a hundred feet. That's a health department code and it's mimicked by the town code. Um, the, you, one is allowed to expand and build within the adjacent regulated area. The reason for, uh, requiring a wetlands application is that there's, uh, extra review, extra level of review and control of mitigating features. In this case, they're upgrading the, the cesspool or the, the existing sanitary system, which is close to the freshwater wetlands, and they're putting in a IA sanitary system. Uh, and they're putting in, uh, roof stormwater collection and, uh, dry wells for it. And, uh, they are decreasing the amount of encroachment into the adjacent regulated area. So these are all positive mitigating features and they're allowed this construction of the current code.
Well, I, I, I appreciate the mitigating features, features, I just, I, I don't necessarily agree with you. I wish I had the actual ordinance in front of me, but I recall I came up with another project at, um, that had to deal with, uh, actually, it was a pool house that was going to be built within a hundred feet of the wetlands, and that was declined. I could give you the address, but I don't think it's necessary, so.
I'm not, I'm not-
You might check that. No one else on the board has an idea about what I'm speaking of. No one's looking at the code right now to help me find that, because I'm, I'm just curious about it. I do appreciate everything they're doing to mitigate what, what they'd like to accomplish, but I just don't think the addition to the house is, is to code.
It is.
It is, it is, so.
Matt, we just don't know how long the ZBA will take. Would you want to see the just-
Yeah, he wants us to, he wants us to finish out the application as it is now, and then if they decide to keep it, go to the ZBA and then come back to us.
Yeah, we'll have to redo it, do a new wetlands agreement.
Um, anyone else on Zoom? Okay, great, so, um, I don't think we're asking for any additional information, so I will close the public here, uh, make a motion to close this public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Could I make a procedural request of the board?
Okay.
Um, since the hearing's been closed, rather than wait until next month, you discuss it, have the, the resolution written up so you vote on it at the following hearing? If we could do the same thing that we did for Carpe and Weinstein and McCann and have a special meeting somewhere between now and next month, so that you guys can discuss it, and if everybody's okay, then you can have your, your vote on it in the October hearing.
We're actually going to discuss it.
Tonight?
Since we closed.
Excellent. And never mind, thank you.
Okay, that ends our business meeting. We move on to our work session. Current subdivision, lot line adjustment applications. We have four, uh, the Bloom minor subdivision, but they are waiting on, as I've repeated myself for a few months now, the, um, whether they get grants for the new IA sanitary system they're proposing for the house, and whether they can tie into West Neck Water Authority's new line, uh, that's near the house. So they're looking into both of those. Uh, we've been told we should have answers on both really soon, and, um, I'll make a note to follow up. Um, so I have some more information for next month, but they have until January eleventh before they must, um, either ask for another extension or submit the final application. We have SH twenty-nine West Neck LLC, it's a lot line adjustment. Uh, they are, as far as I understand, it's the health department waiting for termination from the health department in regards to the transfer sanitary credits. Uh, they have until October ninth, until they have to, uh, extend or finalize. We have the white roadway construction, um, and they have a completion deadline of October ninth. They are proposing again some more changes. And, um, Gordon, I know you were copied on, on this, um, I don't know how closely you've been following it. I've sent the images to the board and the rebuttals. Um, is Bert here?
I'm here.
Oh, Bert, please come up and, uh, tell us what you're proposing.
Um, also with me on Zoom is Karen Hogan and Jason, our, our land, architect or landscaper. And what we're proposing, I gave out all my copies, I think everybody has a copy, but what basically we're proposing is that the original plan was before the road moved and we kept the major line of, 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 um, trees. I'm sorry, we don't, if, we got a picture up of those? Um, and, uh, we kept the trees. And, um, so the original plan had quite a big buffer with, with, with those trees gone. And now that the trees are still there on the right side of the driveway, uh, we're saying that it's, the original plan, um, is, is really not, um, practical because the, if you go to the down one, yeah, no, the, the first plan.
The first, yeah, thank you.
So if you see of, of the first circle, the dark circle, um, you see a bunch of trees there that, that, it, it, it's basically weird to plant those, there'd be too many trees and they probably kill each other over time. So what we're saying, and I'll let Jason speak, is to do just one solid line that's next to the existing trees. Um, there is the deer have eaten the trees that are existing there, um, so you can see people as they're walking down the road, you can see their waste, so this would buffer a hundred percent of the individuals walking down the road. So that's, that's the primary reason here, so we-
Where's the line been, where are you proposing to put the single line?
It's, it's basically right, right there where the, there's the double trees up at the front of, by, by Manantic Road, and it would just be a single row, and I'll let Jason speak into this, but it's a single row that's next to the existing trees.
Can I be so rude to ask you, there's a point on this plan in front of me, because you obviously can't, I, I don't know where these trees are being removed.
Yeah, just touch that.
Yeah, so the existing trees are right here. We didn't take those down because the road moved.
Understood.
Right? We have these, we have two sets of trees here, one here and one here. So what we're saying is we don't need this set and we really don't need these sets because we're going to have just one set of trees that go here. Okay, so that will give us enough buffer. So it eliminates, and, and part of the problem is this is fairly shaded area, so that it's, yeah, there's just too many trees in this area. So Jason, are you on?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay, did I explain that right?
Yeah, so basic, good evening, everybody. I don't know how to raise my hand in here, but, so basically, if you're looking at Manantic Road, there's the, there's the seven trees that are dou, that are double stacked. So basically, that would be planting under an existing tree where it says existing tree road to remain. That'll be basically planting underneath a tree that's on the next property over.
Jason, I'm going to interrupt you. Can you please, uh, state where you're from and just give us, you know, for the record, your office?
Somewhere else landscapes, we're out of Riverhead.
He was talking about, please, you go set with that.
So, I, I'm familiar, I've been there a couple times, I'm really familiar with what's going on, and we saved the two alleys of great trees. Uh, you were right that the, um, deer have eaten up the bottom.
Yeah.
And you can clearly see, and I, I've sent you photos, which you've resent around, you can clearly shoot right under, see, have sightlines underneath those trees. And I think, I agree that this plan should be updated. I would like to see personally some screening coverage on both sides of the new road, because both alleys of trees have these gaps, low gaps. So if we could take the same density of plants, uh, plantings that you have agreed to before and put them on both sides underneath the, you know, by the edge of the road, would be a substantial improvement for privacy, um, to the two adjacent properties, one of which isn't, is yours.
Yeah, so I, I live on, on thirty-two South Manantic, and, um, so I don't, on this side, it is fairly, it is fairly thin, but I don't think we have enough room, and Jason or Karen can help me on this, but I don't think we have enough room to plant on this side. I think that's one reason.
Maybe, maybe Jason can offer some other material that is, uh, more of a, you know, a denser, lower growing, low shade, uh, low, you know, uh, high shade kind of entity that would work, because it's clearly, you, you see right across that person's, a pool, a pool equipment and into their yard as, as, um, and does less so to your property. So that's why I was hoping to see something on both sides. Um, and then you started pointing to the, the, right above the title Artist Lane. You were saying you wanted to get rid of-
Well, I mean, it, it, we, we just believe this is a little bit just too, too, too much.
The area of the dark circle.
I mean, both, we, all the way here, I think what we're saying is we only need one line of trees. One is because we live there and we have buffers here by the pool. And, um, and so really what we're saying is, and I think Jason's going to use a specific type of tree that will give us over time buffers, and if we put these two close together, they'll, they'll just, they'll kill each other, and, and this, this gives us a nice buffer here. So I mean, it's, it really just, it's, it's, it's too many trees here, especially if we're going to try and put some here, then what you're saying is we could swap some of those, but this is just-
Can I ask you to update a plan and give it to us to review?
Um, yes, I'm here.
Unfortunately, it's going to delay us another month or so by the time we look at it next month.
But we're also, part of it's the growing season, so we're, we're really trying to get this in, so we can get this done.
I understand, so that's why when we traded emails, I had suggested that, you know, keep the same density, density of plantings, number of plantings that you've, um, committed to as far as the whole transfer process, the town, county purchasing it.
Yeah.
Keep the same density and, uh, kind of plants, but show them in the new location. I was hoping that you would provide us an updated plan.
No, well, that's why I was hoping to walk it with you guys, because I think, I was, I, I think we just, I understand what, what you're saying now.
We can't have a whole planning board there together.
No, I, I-
And that's, that's, we'd have to notice public hearings, and one of us can't make a, a, a decision for the others.
Got it, okay.
So we need to do, see an updated plan that we can then discuss and, and reach.
Okay.
I just have one question, sorry to interrupt. I can't see who's talking or whatever, but, so as far as, what you were saying, as far as the same density, does that mean the location has to stay the same, or we just have to have the same density on that property and to fulfill what you guys are looking for?
I, I would like to see the same number of plantings and the same, um, you know, in kind, um, not just saying, oh, we're not going to do, we're, we're just trying not to do half the plantings we need.
Right, and my other question, just, I don't want to cut anyone off, so in the corner, right on South Manantic, it starts off with pitch pines, and then it moves, it moves to green giant. So my original thing, my original, you know, suggestion was if we made that a single or double is irrelevant, but if we made that one single tree, so the, the homeowner next door looks at one hedgerow instead of two types of trees in the same location, did that, would that matter at all, or?
I'm less concerned about the double stacking, uh, as long as the, uh, it's, the one line provides a sufficient amount of screening.
Yeah, that, that'll, that'll end up in a hedgerow, and then you just keep those green giants trimmed up, as long as, like, like I said, is if we can keep that one of the same kind of tree from the roadway all the way to the end of that property, I think it would be a way nicer finish. It'll also, it'll all be sufficient for what you guys are looking for as far as the privacy for the roadway.
Yeah.
I wouldn't do it, because I'd like to see the plan. They've agreed to something.
This is hard to visualize, just like, you know.
The only season, you still have two months, three months. Two months.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
So, 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 okay, can you, can you update something and get it to us? When, so if, what's the timing of that? We get it to you and then you make a decision to go through another?
We, we can try to make a decision in advance.
Okay.
We're supposed to do it in a public forum.
Yeah.
Please send us something and we'll, we'll get back to you.
Okay, and just to be clear, you're okay with one line as long as the density's there and it's, it's-
As long as it's a proper amount of screening, I, I, I don't need the double line. I know with privates, you got a much denser hedge if you have two, uh, offset, and that works. And that works for better screen. But if you tell us what it is and we'll.
Okay. And then just a lower something here to clear this, to give them some buffer too. So can you swap some of these?
Please, yeah.
Okay. So I want to.
Gordon, is that same in your understanding what the whole original intent of this was?
Well, basically, um, okay. Basically, nothing has changed.
Gordon, you have to come up to the podium, please.
Gordon Gooding from Community Preservation. The property when we went into the acquisition hasn't really changed. That road has never changed. Meaning when the drawings were done, the, the, the old growth was going to be removed. You know, they put that road in, you had to remove the old growth. So all, all we did is all that's happened on that site is a gravel road is in there. It didn't have buffers before, but I guess that's something that you wanted. I think it's very.
Something that was offered and we've reviewed many, many times on many additions over the last.
It's very difficult. If you, if someone were to visit the site, you would see how difficult it would be to create a buffer, particularly on the left side, going in on the driveway because there's not a lot of space.
Jason just said he thought he could do something.
I'm making a comment, okay? But it's always been open on both sides. It's not like the road did anything to make any changes there. But I understand the point of the road. I don't know how you can grow something there personally. I don't, I really don't understand.
And it's going to be greater usage of the road now.
What?
Greater usage of the road. People going in, parking and then using the hiking trails. It was before it was just for the family.
Yeah. But I mean, it, 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 it just seems to be very difficult. If you, you were visiting and you've been there, they understand your concern about not having the blind. But I, I think you're trying to do something that may be impossible to create. That's just my opinion. But I, you know, the property line is here. There's a couple of scraggly trees here. I don't know how you grow anything underneath it. That's what I don't understand.
There are low, there are high shade plants. Jason probably have a better feel for what they are than we do.
But, yeah, so, so on the south side, I know how you were saying you would like screening on both sides of the roadway. On the south side, I believe it's like a, it's basically like a buff, like a bluff. So there's a little bit of a, of a higher in elevation where those neighbors' trees are going. Remember what you were saying about the pool equipment is visible? So I'll take a look, I'll go down there this week. I'll take a better look at it and see if we would be able to fit that in with, with the roadway.
There's, there's two challenges of that, but we'll, we'll work on it. Which is basically, there's not much room here and it's very dark. So we're going to have to pick the plants wisely.
Understood.
And we'll try that. But just, our goal is to get this thing completed.
And the additional concept is the deer, obviously.
Yeah. So, so, and, but, so our goal is to get this completed, get this land used as it should be to get these in, in the growing season. So let's take a stab at this. That's going to be difficult. Okay, let's get this as dense as possible using one line and get back to the drawing on that. And it will go here. And I think that will, one, in four years from now, they'll be robust plants. They'll be a nice, they won't be crowding each other, won't be taking down dead plants. Right, and I think Jason's got to go.
Those green giants, they grow about two foot a year. So you're not going to plant them on top of each other because they'll, they'll end up, you know, perishing each other. But they're, they grow about two feet, a foot to, two feet a year. So they, they grow substantially. And then they grow right into a hedge and you'll never see anything on either side.
Right, okay. Please, please give us a.
All right, Karen, anything I missed?
Uh, no, I actually just had one quick question. When we submit the revised planting, something and have Jason put together? Or is it something that we're going to have to go back to Jeff Butler, who's the engineer, to do a revised landscape plan? I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of timing.
I'm happy with Jason doing it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last lot line adjustment application we have is for 6 Daniel Lord Road. And we have, Joe wrote a memo for us. Joe, do you want to briefly discuss what's going on?
Sure. He had an initial submission for a lot line modification. And there were some questions about it, particularly about a 15 foot wide strip that was labeled as unknown owner. And then, you know, some, some other mapping issues that needed to be addressed. We got a revised submission.
Please, be quiet, please, in the, thank you. Sorry, glad you had.
Yeah, we, we got a revised submission and it addresses some of the items. But it raises, you know, a few more items. As far as the 15 foot strip goes, deeds were submitted. It appears that that 15 foot wide strip is part of the 6 Daniel Lord Road property. There was an error in the deed at some point and it just got carried over. If you look at the tax map, tax map includes that 15 foot wide strip. There was, you provided a, a site plan that was part of a wetland application that was prepared by the same surveyor that included that 15 wide strip. So it seems like that's part of the property.
I think we should have, just as I know John Senior had prepared the review. I would suggest the board asks for either his attorney that he certifies that he reviewed it as, you know, as an attorney and, and is certifying that this is, in fact, part of it. Or a title company. I would take either or.
Right.
Just because I think that's part of what the board would want to see presented to him. But while I appreciate his full, I would want something a little more formal than just from his email and attachments and just something from him as an attorney certifying that he's reviewed the deeds and he has, is certifying that this is in fact part of it. I think the board would be, if they didn't want to get the title company to do the research, then I would be comfortable with John doing it, but just in a little bit more formal manner.
Okay. Now, as, as far as, as other things typically, when the board reviews a lot line modification and applicant prepares a table, table of areas that has the existing lot areas, the areas that are going to be transferred and what the resultant areas are. It's kind of on this map, but it's not in a.
Because you have a little chart in the corner and that just clearly states everything.
Yeah, and like when you're reviewing the map, it's in a couple of different places and you have to do calculations in order to figure out, you know, what the areas are. And on the map itself, some of the areas are reported with two, to two decimal points, some are three, some are four. And, you know, it's difficult to get the numbers to add up correctly. So they also, in addition to the, the one map that shows the two lot line, oh, the lot line modifications, they've never included the bearing and distance to the south line or the, the line that adjoins both parcels of the 3 Borough Hall Lane property. It's, it's important to have the meets and bounds because the deeds are going to have to be prepared. And, you know, we're going to have to be able to read the deed compared to what's on the map. And then those deeds get filed. So it's that kind of thing that needs to be adjusted. They submitted individual lot surveys for the existing parcels. It has the information on it, but it never got to the lot line modification. And the, the existing survey that was submitted for the 3 Borough Hall Lane property shows a garden. It shows a cable box that's in the middle of the property. And those, those features don't get transferred over to the lot line modification map. But the lot line modification map shows existing features on 6 Daniel Lord Road parcel. So they should probably be added. And, you know, as far as the cable box, why is it there? Is it going to remain? It's basically in the middle of the property. Is it serving anything, any purpose? But it should provide some additional information on that.
So they have a bunch of plodding corrections to make.
Right.
I think the biggest issue right now is this is a lot line change application. In 2000, we let two lot lines go through. But we started saying as a policy, we'd like the health department, because the health department has a separate application process. We'd like the health, health department to sign off on their subdivision before we sign off on ours. We haven't really had a, a lot line adjustment finalized from them. And I know we have some new board members. I think Marcus, you would remember our discussion during Havel Clark and what, Boise. Boise. And it was my understanding that we had done this as a policy. And we asked Joe by email about other towns, how they handle the coordination with the health department application process. And you, and you said confirm that other towns require the health department subdivision before the town sign off.
What happens in the long run? If anybody goes to either redevelop a lot or if it's a vacant lot, build on that lot, they have to go get a health department approval. Health department will look at the lot line and say, that doesn't match our records. There was subdivision that took place here. They don't really recognize lot line modifications. To them, they're all subdivisions or re-subdivisions. So then someone who purchases one of these lots, say, who wants to build on it, they can't. You know, now they have to go back to, now the health department requires them to file a subdivision application. And they have to get the next door neighbor, whoever that might be, to be a party to this subdivision application. And if the next door neighbor doesn't agree, that there, you know, there could be issues.
10 years down the road.
Yeah, yeah. So you're better off requiring, and usually we, for a long time, we would suggest that the applicants go to the health department, but it was kind of up to them. And it's better off, you know, just making it a requirement.
So I do think that this applicant is motivated. They're spinning this off, I think, to put another house up. So they're going to have to go for this, for health department for pretty soon. So this might not be as critical a requirement on them. But I'd like to establish a policy and stick with it across the board for all future applications, this one included.
It's done that way in the South Fork.
Yeah. So how long, how long does the health department subdivision process take? And when they have already started this?
I mean, I think they could have started, but how does long does the health department take? That, that's difficult to, usually on, on lot line modifications, if within existing house, they usually don't go into the water supply and sanitary systems. They don't make, they wouldn't make a house upgrade their system.
The house, the barn, we have, they have UIA systems on there. They have a new well, so the existing structures are covered.
So that, that should be fine. They should be all up to code. So it shouldn't be.
Lengthy of.
Yeah, not for, for something like this.
So what do you guys think about on this? Do you want to require the health department subdivisions be finalized first or?
Is that something, is that not a code related issue or something like is a policy? How does that work?
It's not part, for us, it's become more of a policy trying to follow what other towns are doing.
How, I guess, how do we, would that mean we would change the application?
We should.
Communicate that clearly, right?
That we should be doing that going forward. Lot line, just a lot line, just, we do require for subdivisions.
Why is this called a subdivision?
It's two properties and you're ending up with two properties.
Okay, got you.
Yeah. One's getting more from the other.
Rearranging the lines.
And a lot of times, the lot line adjustments would just be to maybe change a, a small portion of a lot because of an encroachment. If somebody built a shed too close to the line, you know, you, you could do that. This is a little different because it's, you know, they're adding over three acres.
To one lot.
To one lot.
And transferring those half an acre to another lot.
Yeah. But typically, and that's why the health department just looks, looks at them as re-subdivisions. Because, you know, even though it's two, you're starting with two lots, you're ending with two lots. The lines are changing and to them.
For them, for health department, they have to do the same work.
Yes.
And, and you're saying prior to, say, David, Matt and I coming on, this is how you've handled other applications?
We set us a policy, but we haven't had other subdivision. We haven't had any lot, the only thing was SH.
Well, the small one.
SH 29, but that was all involving the health department because they're trying to transfer sanitary presence. So it wasn't really an issue.
And so you needed a policy, sounds like at one point, but we never changed the application.
Correct. So change the applications for future, but be okay with this one? Because we know they're motivated to clarify this sooner? Do you want to see this?
I think you should go with the health department.
It seems like they still have work they need to do. Right? So I would say, I think we should push back and say, we really should be doing this. And I remember they should be doing it in parallel. And I would say we wouldn't approve this lot line modification until that. I think it's safer that way. The property will go free if they pull up a deep system.
They have all those updated surveys and everything.
And then they need to update all ours anyway, so.
Okay. So. So we'll, we'll ask them for the health department sign off and we'll update our application.
Correct.
And also give them all.
And also ask them for some additional, at least an attorney's.
Yes.
Yeah, your conclusion here about what Beth had said, just that he's notifying. Other than just an email.
Right. Some, something more formal.
I'd say, this is, this has not been communicated this time.
I think we did, we did forward the, Wagner did receive Joe's memo.
You forced it.
Yes.
Okay, so then we're going back to other business. ZVA and planning board wetlands application. So we would just briefly discuss this before. I talked to Stephen Kiley briefly about this and he thought in larger towns, it would be beneficial for the ZVA and the planning board to run separate processes. He figured in a larger town where you have, you don't have a board of people making decisions, you have a bunch of clerks and staff who could be talking to each other and coming up with a plan for a cohesive centralized approach. He was a little concerned though, in a smaller board like ours, where say it would be Phil Diorio, the chair of the ZVA and myself. and myself meeting with Stephen Kiley and the building department to go through this. It might not seem so open and such a good process. There was some thought about this ZVA signing off on, when they finalized their application, they sign off on that there's a, I'm just gonna get the statement wrong, but there's no environmental impact to the ZVA. And in Stephen's mind, it's apples and oranges, our impact statement versus the ZVA's statement. So though he was saying that it would probably be a better process to run in parallel, he kind of backed away from it in my conversation. But I'm well open to hear other opinions. Beth, what do you think about running the process? Or is it really something the ZVA should go? We should be following the way it's been run for the last 10, 15 years? But the ZVA make any modifications to an application and then we review it instead of trying to do it together? Put you on the spot.
Yeah. No, I think, I mean, personally, I would rather see the, you know, zoning board make a determination first before the board is reviewing it.
They have to.
Just because we have a situation like we had tonight. You know, what are you noticing? If it's gonna change, then your notice isn't proper. You're gonna renotice things. I think if the applicants, you know, when they, if they receive variances or from the zoning board, then you know at least where everything is gonna be and you're gonna, you know, you're more likely to get your notice correct. I just feel like you might end up with having to renotice things a lot more often if you're.
I think the other side of the, of the other argument would be the ZVA approves something and then we review it and we request some modifications. And then are they forced to go back to the ZVA to re-review stuff we've done? But I think that's fairly rare entity. I can't believe it.
It would seem to me that if the ZVA makes determinations, variances, that are things that are in the wetlands, then that would be a concern. If they're not doing it, if it's all about doing stuff that doesn't affect the wetlands, then it's fine because this doesn't really affect us. It's really, the problem is if they, if they make, okay, they approve a variance that is extremely detrimental to the wetlands and we get the wetlands and we have basically.
Does that mean we can't say no when they're covering that variance?
Well, I think, I mean, you have different criteria that you're looking at than what the, but the variance standards are much higher than issuing a permit. You know, you're varying what the code is. This is, you're permitting something.
The ZVA relationship.
Based on if, if, you know, you meet certain criteria, the board would issue the permit versus in a variance situation.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, I think maybe it's your. I mean, they can work on it at the same time.
I can ask for consult.
You have like a situation where this is, that's in setback, it's in the wetlands. We can't issue wetlands for that until we know it's gone through the ZVA.
Right.
But we can work on it at the same time, you know, they could.
Well, again, I don't know, we can't really.
So we can.
So for instance. We received an application for 10 Cheekwood Avenue. We don't know if the ZVA is gonna permit it. And if they make changes, then we're doing all this work and then have to look at a different saving plan later. So I'm just.
I hate serializing government because this means everything takes longer. But I think in this case, it's better than having multiple iterations.
And I know we're talking about all these different issues coming up because we're new at handling wetlands, but I think it's worthwhile reviewing these. Even if it's not the most exciting.
Well, I think this is an aspect of, if you see what the town board, the town board has a lot more leeway on what they could do. We have a little bit less, they make, all we have is the wetland.
Well, we've had issues in the past. So even when the town board was reviewing wetlands, we had an issue with, the ZVA said, you can't have this building in the front yard setback, push it back. And that pushed it into the wetlands. So the ZVA denied them having that building encroach in the front yard setback. And then it came to the town board for a wetlands review. And we said, well, you can't have that building in the wetlands. Push it forward or get rid of it. So their option was that you can't be in the front yard. You can't be in the wetlands. Either cut your building in half and have it short or don't have the building. So, you know, but the, so the two independent reviews sort of set the parameters for what was allowed.
And that, I think, is similar to what was the Point Lane project. And maybe that's the one you're referencing, I don't know.
This was in Montclair. But yeah, so, I mean, it's happened before, but it's good to have, I think, the ZVA weigh in first. Because then you know what your baseline is for what they're willing to waive.
Okay. Let's move on to wetlands permit applications. I'm, the first one is for seven Cheekwood Avenue, as I have been. What about, we signed off on.
Oh, I certainly saw if we signed.
Yeah, I crossed it off. It was redundant.
Oh, okay.
I'm the architect for the applicant and so I accuse myself. Marcus.
All right, so we're gonna begin our discussion on this. Seven Cheekwood Avenue, both were three meetings. We listened to all what you had to say. We read your letters with interest. Thing about the planning board is that we don't write the wetlands law. Town board does. We just make sure that the applicant is following the rule. And what rule we follow is specifically chapter 129, wetlands. And this is a wetlands application. And that's, we get to the logic of this, based on a letter of denial from the building department. Now, this, this law, 129, I find so many people misconstrue, you know? And I've taught you that a good way to, a helpful way to look at it is to realize that there are two regulated areas. There's the vegetative buffer, which is the first 75 feet. And then there's the adjacent regulated area, which is 75 to 100 feet. Now, in the vegetative buffer, we generally allow no new expansion of square footage. But in the adjacent area, we always allow construction. We allow every small houses, decks, pools, so forth.
Within code.
Within building code, right? Within the building code, of course. Now, you know, there are some who believe that the adjacent vegetative area should be scrutinized as much as the first 75 feet. And that argument comes up every, very often. And but the law is, is that construction is allowed. So I'm not gonna make this a huge question here, but we at the planning board, we have to follow the law and we have to follow logic. We don't have the luxury of taking decisions based on our imagination or anybody else's imagination. The first question to ask, the logical way to go for this is, is there any new construction proposed in the vegetative buffer? The first 75 feet? And the answer is no. Second question, Joe, is that true? In this seven Cheekwood, there is no proposed construction in the vegetative buffer, 75?
That's correct, according to the site plan.
Okay. Second question, is the proposed construction in the adjacent regulated area permissible? And the answer to that is yes. Joe, is that true?
According to the code.
So, I mean, there's nothing here, this.
I think the only other issue is a definition specifically of an accessory dwelling unit or accessory apartment versus a, and that's very specific in our written code about what defines that.
Right.
And as my personal, is like, our code, you could argue is poorly written or has holes in it in specific ways of grammar. It does. But that is the code. Right? So the question is, do we follow specifically exactly the word? There are specific words in the code. If the words were not in the code and it was left very gray, then there'd be space for us to make. But it's very specific. This defines in this particular case what a kitchen is. Right? It's like, that's this and this. If it doesn't have that, then by definition of the code, it is not an accessory, it's not an accessory apartment. And so it is just a sleeping quarters.
Is that even, is that even under our purview?
So, I know, I'm saying it, but it's all about, that's a lot of the argument discussions about the fact that whether. It's not even our purview. That, that's planning, that is, that is a, that is a building permit issue.
Further, it's, it would come from the public. It would come from the community if they are not concerned about code. And as you said, the way it's written, gray is more of a.
That's the board's determination. Correct. So, but as far as wetlands rules, this is all within.
But I agree, but you would need to, the board needs to remember, they need to apply the criteria for permit issuance, which is found in 129-5 in order to grant a, no permit shall be issued unless the applicant demonstrates and the planning board finds that the following standards have been met and then the standards are listed there.
I do want to say something. So I, in looking over the criteria, just as Marcus says, we have to apply the law as it is and we don't have any wiggle room. It's not about feeling, it's about looking at what we're given in our tool belt and using it. So of all the criteria, I would say this, this application, in the presentation of the application, all the criteria was quite robustly given to us in terms of calculations, math, drawings. I mean, everything was very robust to me and satisfied all the concerns I have for all of these things, including environmental impact and flooding and so forth. The concern that I personally have is with A5. In the presentation, it seems to be either a lack of 5A or the weakest part of the application, showing that no practical alternatives can be constructed.
Well, because.
Let me just finish, I'm sorry, let me just finish my thought. Okay, thanks. So that's the concern I have and in the absence of any substantive information to the contrary, it's assumed that a practical alternative can exist, can be. So for example, I mean, what, one other property that came to mind earlier was Essent Beach LLC, where in their application, they showed alternatives, whereas their property could have been subdivided and three subsequent houses built, each with their own water drawing on the resources and so forth. So that was a way that they showed how alternatives would actually have worse environmental impact than what they were proposing. So I, that's, that's the only concern I have is, and I'm just going strictly, you know, very literally down this, that's the concern I have is with, is with five, with A5.
Well, the thing there is if they moved the structure, they'd move it into the setback. So then it'd be violating zoning.
I think the only, I discussed earlier. The only alternative, I think, again, is like, could they make it smaller? Right? Is the only, but that doesn't actually change anything about what's going on, right? It doesn't actually affect. If you moved it, it wasn't in 25 feet, it's not in the regulated area at all. And if you move 25 feet from the building itself, would be the only option that they'd have otherwise. That's currently, as my understanding is.
You've allowed it, had no issue with building in the regulated area. In the.
Right, that's not, you can build in the, you can build in the regulated area. But my, my point, and again, I'm, I can't get in the homeowner's head or their engineer's, you know, presentation. But it seems to me, for some reason, that that was the least robust. It lacked the, it lacked the most of the information. And probably because there isn't, there is nothing to show for that. So that's why it was sort of just not presented.
If they moved it to the west, they'd be going into the setback. If they moved it towards the road, they'd be going into the setback. If they moved it to the east, they'd be going into the swimming pool.
The only other option, again, like I said, is to actually reduce the size of the.
Yeah.
That's the only other, I'd say, is the alternative.
Right.
And I think then it comes down to, we have to, we believe or not believe the owner's thing, this is the least space that I, that we need in our space. Again, but.
That's irrelevant because if they're allowed to build there and if they're allowed to build that, we can't dictate the size of the.
Right, there's.
I'm thinking unless it violates the code.
Right, exactly.
Right, there's nothing in the code about the size of accessory quarters, sleeping quarters. Well, you know, people are talking that this is like this huge structure. It's 2,287 square feet. And only 488 square feet are in our jurisdiction.
Definitely.
And if they would have taken the 100 square foot exemption, it would be down to 388 square feet.
But they're in our jurisdiction, but apparently they're legally.
People are there.
So whether, whether we agree that that building needs to exist is irrelevant.
As far as that, our job is, I believe, is to understand and try as much as possible to make sure there's no adverse effects to the wetlands. And I think I should say truly that the, all of the data around the actual, any concerns about flooding, any concerns around the planning, any concerns around, it's, it seems to have met the criteria of not having a negative impact on the wetland, which is what our job is. It's not to decide who can build what in what place. And that's not, that's not what we did.
Right. But if that were the case, 5 wouldn't be in, in the criteria. So I can't in good conscience just say I'm going to ignore 5.
Well, I just said they can't move it anywhere else.
What you're saying is because they didn't specifically say, we looked at alternatives and didn't find any?
They didn't show, they didn't show any. I don't know, I don't.
I guess it's the definition of the project. The project is this size of space. There is truly no other space on the property to build it, that I could see. Like you said, other than taking the pool, which is.
The pool's already there, you have to remove the pool.
We just redid the pool too. So there is, for this size of structure, there is no.
I totally, I understand what you're saying. I totally understand what you're saying. Then again, one of the alternatives could be, if you want to talk about alternatives, is not to do it at all. The alternative is a very broad concept, so.
Yeah, but if they were.
Yeah, but if you look, but I think that's reaching, I'm sorry.
No, I know, seeing that as an example.
Yeah, but everything's done. But if they were 388 square feet less, we wouldn't even be having these conversations. But they followed through with it.
Let's just say hypothetically, I'm not saying this was ever presented in the application, but let's just say they showed, you know, two or three other alternative drawings that were smaller or somehow different. And they actually showed in their calculations that that particular drawing would be actually more impacted to the nearby or some, somehow, you know, detrimental. Whereas the one that they had come up with is actually better.
The best.
Right, the best. But the only, the only thing that I noted was the homeowner's own testimony at one of our hearings, just based on her adult children needing to use, you know, the spot as vacation, but also work, workspace. And the engineer said a couple of sentences, you know, to vouch for that as well. But that's the only, but there's no other robust presentation as to show why something, why alternatives, which in this case could be just a different size, different type, different structure. different structure. I don't know, I, I have to go through all of these and, and feel confident about what, that I'm, I'm applying all these. I, I can't get past that.
Oh, I think 2287 is not that big. Also, historically, right in that same spot, there was once a very, very huge house, like Austrian, Farquhar size house there. I just found a picture of it today. I just wanted to point that out, it's right in that spot of, of everything out there.
I think what's interesting to me is the, the last sentence of five, making the determination note, the planning board generally finds that conducting the proposed regulatory activity on the side or landward side of the house is highly preferred, conducting it within the regulated area. The question is, is there any other space to conduct this in the property? I believe there was not, the only other place is on, on the other side of the home, going toward the, the map.
I think, I think what's happening is we're perhaps you are kind of getting caught up in the issue of the size, but like you had mentioned, well, you know, you could make it smaller, yes, but.
To get out of the regular area. I'm just trying to.
Right, but I'm saying, but like, let's just say it was not about the size, it's just about looking at the interpretation of five, like 5A. Okay, so normally in a presentation, if you have science and calculations and, you know, some, some kind of substantial information that you want to show your board as to why you have to be drawn to make this particular building, you would, you would pull that up, you, you would present it. I mean, I, I can just go to the map myself and do some simple calculations and see that there can be an alternative structure, it just may not be the size that, that they're presenting, but it's in there. So I'm just saying this, I'm just surprised that something wasn't, and I think something wasn't shown, because there probably isn't anything.
Yeah.
But I can't claim to know what, you know, what.
All I know is.
In the absence of information, that's what I'm saying.
All I know is within, within the space, which is defined by within the setbacks on either, on all sides and the regulated area, the only way to fit anything in there is to either be smaller than what it is. Like, there's no other space other than moving a pool or tearing down the house and building something entirely new there, you're not going to get anything, that I could say, because you're just limited. I was like, split budget.
Right, but, so I'm saying they, but they could have conceivably shown something that was a, a smaller size.
I'm asking that. I guess the question, it comes down to a definition of practicable, practical, that, practical alternatives. In other words.
Alternatives is.
And who determines what's, it's up to the, is it, who's determining whether it's practical or not? It's like, is it the homeowner's goal of what they want to accomplish? Because again, the face of that, well, what I want to accomplish is this, there's no other alternative than this, that's, that's what we present. Or is it our determination of alternatives? It doesn't seem like it's on us to come up with the alternatives.
Well, and I think Julie is actually saying that.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
She's saying that, no, they haven't provided any alternatives that were.
But we, but we didn't ask for any during other meetings. I mean, we could have asked. We asked for lots of things. Right?
Well, we sort of asked, should we make it small? And she came up here and she was like, this is her dream house for her kids.
That's what you said.
Right, and so if I, to, to me, it seems like that, that is their opinion of what, that this is the only practical alternative. I think it seems to me like that. From their perspectives, they presented that.
But five.
But they don't provide their perspective in all the other criteria. That's always like, you know, stormwater calculations, you know, installation of tribal, this is, we're, we're talking math and science and figures that we can just put together and say, yes, this has an environmental impact or it doesn't. It, it can be proven that it does or it doesn't. And this, the one, what you're saying is just subjective on what she, on what she's saying and the reason why she wants to have it a certain size.
And it is subjective. Yeah, to, to matter what, it seems to me like A5, by definition, is subjective.
Because there is, there is no way to calculate an alternative. Alternative is based on what the owner needs or wants, or is trying to accomplish. Said a few times.
Right, but it just says, I'm just reading straight from the legislation, practical alternatives.
My comes down to, if this was true, if, if they had an alternative that had nothing outside the regulated area, then it wouldn't be in our purview, because outside the regulated area, it's not, there's no wetland permit required.
Right.
So it's either, they either do that and we never have to do this, because they've gone to the planning department and they submitted plans that were within this area, and we would never have seen this. So that means they've gone through whatever process they have and, you know, this is what they want to do. So by definition, by getting to us and having done a wetlands permit request, they're saying this is what we need to do.
Well, here it's, you know, right in the application, explain why this project does not or cannot be located outside of vegetative buffer, regulated area. Required front yard setbacks prohibit moving building landward from proposed location.
Yes, but they could still be within the setback if they happened to produce a home that, or sorry, an accessory dwelling that was a different dimension. Don't get hung up on the size factor, just.
But, but, but you just said that was.
The only way.
I mean, this happens to just be, I'm saying, a different dimension, happens to be that a smaller dimension would fit. But again, I bring up the one, I think it was Essent Beach LLC, where in, I forget the exact details, but I'm paraphrasing, in their presentation, they showed how they had every right to in fact subdivide that property, put three or two or three more homes, and they showed a practical alternative was actually more environmentally impactful, and they opted to put one house.
The vast majority of the ones we reviewed have not done that. The vast majority of our wetland reviews have no alternatives in them, and we've never had them.
We don't ask for alternatives.
I, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I disagree. I'm going to have to disagree on.
We're not asking. But if, but if our other wetlands reviews, do you know of others where they show alternatives with different options? I don't remember reviewing.
No, but we had Carpe, where they basically, I mean, they were right up on the wetland and they were able to build it actually without having to even go over, they.
They didn't go over their existing footprint. They didn't go over their existing footprint.
But we actually pushed them back, if you recall, right, onto their footprint.
But this one has no footprint.
Yeah.
It wasn't anything there.
I think, I think you guys have missed the point. I've, I've, I've stated how, how I feel about this, so I, I can't, I can't get past this one. This is a, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to apply this the way I see it, and that's, that's what I feel about it. In its current state, I, I don't think.
I want to understand more about.
Yeah, I think my, my challenge is, is the classic problem of like, our code is not the best written code in the world. These are the words that are here.
This is what I have to work with.
No, no, but I'm saying, this one is subjective. The other ones are much less subjective, in my mind. Right? Because we can measure whether there's net increase or runoff, we can tell, you know, I negated that, we have definitions of what we mean by that. This is a pure, like, do we think they demonstrated there's no alternative? It's purely subjective. So I look at that as one of two ways. One is either whoever did the code wanted to give some people outs, so they could vote one way or the other, depending on how really feel that day. A lot of our code is written that way.
That we, that we don't know.
No, but I, I've seen our code, there's a lot of that in our code, right? It's like, if it's left gray, and usually it's purposely gray, so that people can do stuff just like. Just like stove, or stove, same thing.
Yes.
Same thing, it's the same thing, but it's what we have. So I think it's, it seems, it seems like we have to go with the, no matter what, we have to, we have to as a board determine our decision based upon, in this case, what we believe the applicant has presented, whether they believe they're submitting in good faith.
Maybe you could shed some light on.
I think each, each board member gets to make their own decision. The board does not have to be a unanimous board on every decision application. So if certain board members feel that certain criteria aren't met, that's the decision of the board members. The other board members who want to weigh in maybe and go through, you know, how they feel that the application meets or doesn't meet the certain criteria, I think that would be good. So go through everybody, because if I need to prepare a decision, I need to know, you know, specifically why the board feels that these, this application meets the criteria set forth in the code, so.
All right, well, the proposed action occasionally might risk of impairing the function and value of the well. Well, the building's outside of the vegetative buffer. The site is fully bulkheaded.
And the engineer did, I, I do have to say, did prepare adequately about the flooding, which we asked him to go back and do. And it, I don't remember the exact, but I could picture where it showed the runoff coming back into the street and how it actually wouldn't cause more flooding to the neighbors' property, because that was a big concern. I don't have any issue with that.
They're, they're recapturing all the roof runoff.
I believe through all the things that were presented, ensuring plants have a negative impact on quantity and quality of groundwater, there's no effect. We're not, they're not watering, there's no effect. I think the, the only thing here that you could say is, you know, impairing functions, like, it is going into the 25-foot buffer, which they are allowed to do so, on code.
And is there mitigation that would be offsetting that impact into the 25, you know, what mitigation is the applicant provided that would offset any impacts of going into the 25-foot buffer?
I think they're doing dry wells. They're not changing any of the turf grass or any of the, any of the planning space.
Other than removing some dead trees, they're actually. And the tree they were moving, it went over there.
It's dead.
Stick a weed 16 inches into it, it's hollow, it's, I like trees, they're very nice, but they start to die there.
It's on, it's going to fall. I would, I guess I would also say, what I, what I heard in the applicant was the goal to have, now that they are here full time, not to use this as a rental space, they're going to have their family, multi-generations stay here, a large part of the summer, the reason for the space is because of that.
To work, they said, yeah, to work and vacate at the same time.
Yeah, exactly. And so to me, it's like, more people living and enjoying, so it's a good thing. My, my point of view. Which our code was better written, I don't think, but we have our codes.
Only we're not the only town.
With this in common of us, it, it's not like we just get to pick and choose, like some of the components of this we're going to apply and others we're just going to kind of overlook or.
We're applying, we're fully applying code.
Apply illusionally, so that's.
You know, there's a, there's a lot of want for us to go beyond the code. Not in our purview.
So then, from what I'm gathering from the discussion, it would be a 3-1 vote to decide, I grant the application.
Grant the way it is right now, and I'm, I'm happy to look at it again if.
So then if it is a favorable vote, I would need to just go through what the mitigation will be, just to make sure I get everything.
I just want, you got, all three of you don't, you're just, you don't understand what I'm, what I'm trying to say with, you know, 5A at all.
I understand what you're trying to say.
I understand what you're saying, I just don't know if that's something that needed to be done.
I mean, you're asking to apply other examples of all the ways to do this, is what you're saying?
Well, the code does say.
It does, yeah.
The applicant has demonstrated that there's no practical alternatives which allow the project to be constructed outside the regular area. If you, if the majority feels that the applicant has demonstrated that, that's fine. She does not.
I think it's definition.
You don't all have to.
Like I said, they can't go to the west because they're going into the setback.
I think it's, it's the definition of the project, right? And the project, if the project is defined as this size of structure, there is no alternative. They showed that by saying there's no space because it goes into the buffer. That's, that is, so it's all about definition of.
Yeah, I mean, I can see, I can see both sides of it.
Because it's, it's just about, it just happens to be about, it happens to end up being about size on this application. Let's just say it was not about size on, on further future applications. You, you still have to consider this part, so.
Yeah, to me, to me, it would be, it would be, if you could move it and get it out of, then, then yeah, I'd want to see that alternative, like, if I moved it like this and put it over here on my place and you're not in the buffer anymore, that's great. That's a great alternative. I don't see any way to do that with this project, as defining the project as being the goal to have this larger space. It happens to be size related, but.
But with everything else so, so adequately supplied, it just, it just makes me wonder that why that one portion, and probably in the absence of anything further, it's probably because they didn't want to present anything further on that.
Again, I think we could have easily asked for that, when we had, we had so three months of open meetings on, on this, we could have easily said, show us alternatives and get you out of the regulated area fully. But we didn't ask for that.
But in her testimony, she, she's, she's, she's sort of alluded to that just in saying that the size was what she wanted for her adult, again, her adult children were, but that's.
And so, and to me, that actually means that, okay, you've gone through, and, yeah.
But, but that's just, that's just somebody having human desire for, you know, what they want in a structure, but there's nothing to back it up. I mean, other than I personally just wants to.
Well, there's nothing in the code restricting the size of accessory sleeping, there's nothing.
That is true.
Maybe somebody said that, maybe, maybe that's the idea. Maybe they could.
The project encompasses that size. It's a, it's, it's a gray.
Maybe, maybe they can bring it to 1,200 square feet, but that's, you know, the thing is, is that the footprint is like 1,200 square foot. It's a less impervious surface and all it's going to be collected, all the water.
And, and you could argue about the entire thing of like, what defines according to code what a bedroom is and what it's like, it's like, you're allowed to sit in it, could easily be converted into a bedroom, yeah, well, it's not allowed to, it's by definition, by what it is, it's allowed, you're allowed to have one of these rooms, you're allowed to, that is the way the code works. I don't love it even.
I also can't base things on what people might do down the road.
Exactly.
I would agree with you on that.
But that's a lot of, a lot of the.
I'm not arguing with you.
A lot of the.
No, I agree, I agree.
And to me, it's like, I try very hard to take all of the feedback and apply the parts that are actually affect the code and the decision of, of, well, within our purview to have any impact on. If you argue like, well, they should all change, we stoves, I'm like, great, go talk to the town board about changing the code. This is not the venue for that.
And that comes up like all the time. Like, I've been watching town board meetings for 30 years.
And, and that's where it should be happening, right? It's not, that's not our job. Unfortunate, poor portion, but it's not.
Well, what are the, well, there's half, well, the ones they're recommending, normally I would ask for a automatic pool cover, but they don't have a rectangular pool.
It's odd shaped, yeah.
Odd shaped pool.
That's all I heard.
Somebody in the audience said, recommended a cistern because they have a sprinkler system. So I checked with the billing department, they don't have a sprinkler system, they have a drip system with less than 250 admiters that uses 0.9 gallons of water per hour, and you don't need a permit for that size system, so.
So there's not, so just to follow from what you're saying, there is anything else we can do about the pool, because of the shape of it?
No, we can't, we can't have an automatic collar cover for that. That's currently, I don't know, a lot of the.
That's currently, no, a lot of the concrete, is it on a, it's a freshwater pool or saltwater pool?
Um, I think it's a freshwater pool, but they're going to do the, the.
The salt cell pool disinification. Yeah, it's all, and that's, again, all outside of the.
Yeah.
That's the thing, like the pools, I don't even know.
In the application, it says mitigation measures, installation of stormwater collection, recharge, utilize salt cell pool disinfection, utilize cartridge pool filter.
I'll apply.
You can update it from, about the. That was one of the last things that came in, right? David and Lee, right? That was one of the last things they submitted.
Very much on it. Don't remember.
Does that ring a bell, Seth?
No.
No, I thought the last thing he submitted was the test hole, it was five things.
But if you think about it, this application was submitted in October of 2022.
It was a vegetation plan, you are correct.
Just look at it.
There's a proposed vegetation plan that was added.
Does anyone need it, I have.
That's from the memo from Matt on.
This is the last.
829, that last one. Yeah, had the test hole data, had the cross-section.
He has, you have it, right?
Yeah. Impact of regrading. I would say follow the vegetation plan for, for all these plans.
Oh, good vowing request. No, this is the right. Sorry, I thought I had them.
See that? Here.
Yeah, that, that tree is now.
Wants to remain.
Someone's buying out. They have that existing vegetation, like it's bringing against the vault.
Yep, so, yeah.
It's all being kept, you know, it's all remaining.
That's the menu, the non-herbaceous. And then they're gonna replace the turf grass, the construction area where the staging area is obviously gonna get torn up, and so I'm gonna replace that. Let's see what kind of grass they're gonna do, fescue and clover mix.
Also, just to remind you, if, I believe, I'm pretty sure if they do, if you do approve this now, they're, they have to check in with the heights too, they might have burla stipulations, I remember that was mentioned, and they, right, I think the heights has.
I don't know if they have any purview.
Yeah, I don't think they do, they have to, well, when they go, they're gonna have to go.
I don't think that's, I don't think they have any, they don't have any belief.
If they're CNRs or something, that's.
Yeah. I think it was mainly just about being off the road, construction, which is what they did.
I just remember there being a sentence like in one of the memos, so I don't know if we need to just mention that and, or not. You could be right.
Yeah, I think, I think that might have been a request of the heights, I don't know if they.
If there's, if there's CNRs or anything that's filed as part of their subdivision, that's something that they would have to comply with.
That's what you need, though. So how do we do it?
Now I can prepare the resolution.
I'll be for next.
For the next meeting.
Okay.
This is Kimberly Ray on Zoom, and I would like to speak, please.
No, you're not allowed.
You're not allowed, comments are closed.
Because there have been several.
Comments are closed.
By board that misconstrue the law entirely.
Comments are closed.
Comments are closed, you can close. Give her a please.
Okay, the next wetlands application on the list is for Weinstein Hensley, we've approved that, so we don't need to discuss it.
All right, so she's.
Austin. Austin and Diamond.
Yeah.
Want to go through some of your thoughts, want to start? I mean, I, I thought everything was fine. IA sanitary system going in.
Yeah.
I think, again, the name, just impact of moving.
Well, that's.
Shed, but I think if the assumptions were moving it, I guess the only thing I would say would be, it would be nice if it could get moved. Somehow they can keep those trees and still move it, that would be amazing, but I don't know what, I, I don't know why I would say it could not.
Well, you.
All I saw is a picture, so hard for me to tell, like stairs around, it's like, take the stairs away.
When you're looking at this little studio, there's, there's so, it just seems in, in the size to the studio, when you look at the stairs, it's actually like way more stairs than I think you need for the structure, it just seems like, when you look at it, it's like more stairs than anything else. So I, I almost wish they could just cut the stairs off and keep the structure, so I understand they're gonna move.
Why don't we do it this way? Why don't, I've got the, the various points in front of us, why don't we go through this? A number on the proposed action and location will not create a risk of impairing the function on value of the wetlands in buffer. Property's very flat, I don't think that the two bits of construction will have any effect on the wetlands. Number two, the proposed project will not diminish any wetlands in size. Using the approving authority, find that the proposed activity is water-dependent or requires access to the wetland as a central element of its basic function, and will result in possible alteration or impairment of the wetlands. I think it's improving the wetlands, if anything, the IA system, the stormwater collection being the, the two biggest items.
And in reality, moving the stairs out of the wetlands, that's an improvement as well, right? If we go with it.
It's a, it's a, it's an overall reduction of the intrusion into, if you want to call it. Stairs come out like on an angle, they'll be like 90% out of the higher vegetative buffer, I mean, and the adjacent buffer too.
Again, if we're going with what's written in the wetlands, they're gonna be gone 100%.
Yes, they're gone 100%.
Right, right now, the plan is to remove the whole thing and relocate it into a conformant location, that's what's before the board right now.
Yeah.
Number three, the proposed project will not have a negative impact on the quality and, well, the quantity and quality of the groundwater. There's no change, it's only.
Yeah, because all the construction is happening, it's at least two feet above that, you know, de-watering, so it's.
They are, they are also supposedly gonna save the lilacs from where the chimney is.
The proposed project will not create a net increase in the risk of runoff, it actually diminishes it.
Yes.
The one thing, I wasn't certain whether the studio is getting roof storm, roof stormwater collection, I would wanna see that included.
Oh, as far as when they move it, make sure.
They, I think they showed it for the house, I wasn't certain.
Yeah, I don't know if.
Do you remember Marcus, listening?
I don't think so. So I think that is.
Say that again, what was the?
So they're, they proposed roof stormwater collection for the house, who just went and disposed of it.
They're moving the studio, add drainage appropriate and stormwater drainage.
The applicant has demonstrated there are no practical alternatives which allow the project to be constructed outside the regulated area. Practical alternatives are presumed to be, unless the applicant clearly demonstrates otherwise. In this determination, note that the planning board generally finds that conducting the proposed regulated activity on the site or landward side of the house is highly preferred to conducting it within the regulated area. They are moving the studio outside the regulated area, and the bathroom addition, it makes complete sense to, from an aesthetic and functional use, to have it as an extension of the house.
But they talked about moving it on the other side, and basically it doesn't work with flow, we didn't actually see drawings.
They didn't want it to go as far, it could be put on the roadside of the house, but it seems like it makes practical sense to, from aesthetics and from functional reasons for where they are proposing it.
That's in the.
It's in the adjacent regulated area. Last requirement, the applicant has submitted information to describe alternative site locations, configuration sufficient for determination that the proposed work and location would have a less adverse environmental impact than any other practical alternative in order for it to be approved. Practical alternatives that are constructed entirely outside the vegetative buffer are presumed to have less adverse impact on the wetlands than projects that do not meet such standards, unless the applicant clearly demonstrates otherwise. I think they've, again, I think that they answered in a similar, similar way that it was answered previously, there are other, there is another location, but it isn't as overwell, as good in my mind. And the fact that the property slopes so slightly down to the wetlands and that they're doing the IA system and the roof stormwater collection, I think overall, it's a, it's a big improvement. Is there any other thoughts that you guys have?
So functionality beats out putting it into the wetlands.
It's, it's in the adjacent regulated area, it's not in the vegetative buffer, and.
It's going out like 15 feet?
It's, it's not a huge intrusion, and it's remaining off the top of my head 84 feet from the wetlands.
Yeah.
So again, that's my mind.
Yeah, it's very similar to the distance of the rest.
Yeah, exactly.
Improving the runoff, so.
Driveway is already gravel, I believe, it's on asphalt, right?
It's, it's not asphalt.
It's not gravel. Now, the question about some plantings, well, if anyone wants a little bit more of a vegetable buffer from the wetlands.
Take a look.
It does have a lot, I mean, it seems natural to start to treat disturbed areas.
Again, probably do more shaming, something different than it is.
I'm okay with the application on.
And those two trees, we just chalk it up.
Well, let's, let's see if they can be saved.
Well, I would say the mitigating factors do all, do all, I would, I would request that they say do all, go to all means possible to try to save the trees.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, it, it actually might work.
You know, I don't see why those trees would have to come down.
The only thing is like somehow to get in there, to pick up the thing and move it, there's like, they need, I think, somehow, they could, they can drive it out.
Sometimes trees are damaged in the process, like, you know, with, like, where you don't expect it because of all the moving and covering the roots and things like that, it can interfere and make it a little bit.
I think that would be a mitigating thing I would request, is to. Best effort.
I just think.
You know those terms.
Coming from the left side, and I think it's very steep there. I don't know who'd be moving it, Davis or Dawn, but I have a lot of experience with Davis and his ability to do stuff like this.
It's something, again, it's not required, it's like, I think best effort is.
All good?
Yeah.
With the CAC, did they have?
They had comments.
Yes.
Where is it?
It's stuck in my stuff, yeah?
That's your copy.
Okay, so the vegetation plan for disturbed areas.
Yes, after they move the thing, once they've, whatever they've taken out of the.
We didn't ask for it.
Yeah. That's what the CAC is asking for, I'm saying.
Well.
I thought we closed, all right, so it's.
You can ask for it as a condition of approval.
Okay. Fair with that?
Just to.
Yeah.
Because they might not even need it, you know, if they end up do go and get their variance.
Correct, and they may leave it.
Right, so it might be something that you'd make as a.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
With the ZBA by us asking for the trees not to be.
Yeah, but our head, that's.
We're good with that one, move on. Next one is Hills Tam, 169 Ramon Drive, we have a memo on that, a revised memo. And I think the revisions show are just that they provided more information, basically the SWIP application, though it hasn't been finalized, SWIP application has showed information.
Right.
And so that's.
The, the site plan was revised to eliminate the portion of the project that has to do with the removal of the bulkhead and.
Because that's been done on our separate application.
They don't have approval from that, from the ZPA yet, so that will be a subsequent application, and they've addressed the items that we were looking for in a revised site plan and erosion control plan and details that they provided. They did prepare a SWIP, you know, SWIP document, it was submitted to the town town engineer, who's Stormwater Management Officer. So, but they don't need, while they need SWIP coverage, in order to get a building permit, they don't need that for the wetland application.
But it was helpful to get the information because it had a lot of more information for us. So I think we're ready to set up a public hearing for next month on this application.
Yeah.
Can I trouble you to write a notice? Last one on the list is hours at 10 Chiefwood Avenue, we briefly spoke about this, I, I think the application has been submitted early, and it's still in limbo at the zoning board of appeals, so I think we. I, I think the application has been submitted early, um, and it's still, uh, in limbo at the zoning board of appeals, so I think we until those EBA makes their determination, and then we can, uh, move, move Adam into this application. Uh, we can, you'd like to assign it to two people now, I mean, anyone wants to volunteer on this one?
I'm, I'm kind of, I've been light since I was out, so I feel like I need to step up a bit.
Dave and Julie, thank you very much.
I got three things going on.
We have, um, two special permit applications, uh, for houses that are more than six thousand square feet, they're both affected by the, um, town moratorium, five Winthrop Road, that's on, and one pandean. I believe one pandean came to the town board asking for an exemption, and the town board is denying that, is that correct?
Hasn't gone through formally, but that's the.
That's the intent of it, so it will be denied, the exemption request, so they still have to meet the six thousand square foot warranty. That's all I have.
Can I ask, should you a question for you, love?
Sure.
Okay, um, we had a couple of hearings closed and, um, I'm sorry. Trevor, uh, we had a couple of hearings closed and discussions were completed tonight, I didn't know if we could have a special meeting before the October tenth meeting, so that, um, those could be held on, or if we wanted to wait until the October next, waiting to have votes.
They'd be for the October tenth.
October tenth, okay.
Yeah. I mean, unless the board, I, I just, I'm away, so.
Oh, you're away.
That's for, you're on Ireland.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, for a week.
Yeah, but if he wants to have a special meeting, that would be in.
In two weeks.
And I have to write it. So.
What, what, there's a plan, you got time to plan.
And, and also the.
No reason to sleep.
Not supposed to, I, I, I wouldn't advise the board to have special meetings every, now you've changed your whole schedule, you have two meetings.
Yeah, fair enough.
That's nice.
And we, we were just trying to do this because there's a lot of people waiting for a long time.
Understood. Right.
I don't know, people out, but. Uh, anything else, anyone else? So I make a motion to close the September twelfth, uh, planning board meeting, do I have a second?
You have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.